Quite willing to sue the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a motion open the meeting, please.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chairman's comments, other than the fact that we are on TV and we are live tonight, at least act accordingly. Item number two, SP 119-001, Heron Cross and Soul LLC, map 89 lot 142, landscape bond release of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we met over the summer with the applicant. I know that Paul met also. We reviewed the, and I know Nick was also here with us, reviewed the engineering. There were some minor changes. They've kind of completed the project. It's been going on a long time. They finally completed the as-built and gotten everything in, and the last thing is, it's, landscape's been in. They actually, they replaced, I think there were a handful of dead plant material that was replaced.
There's a bunch of trees, I wonder, that had been replaced.
And I know, I know Paul walked it with us as well. Um, I know that, I would not have picked the screening that they proposed. I would have done a much different screening than that, but, and, and it's, you know, I don't particularly care for it, but that's what was approved, and so I'm, I'm recommending that the bond be released.
Paul, you okay with leaving them there?
Yeah, yeah.
I have an issue with that.
Go ahead.
I actually went down there, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, I walked it, and the string of trees at the south end of that, there's like nine or ten of them, they're virtually dead. And what happens is, coming up further, I saw a few sporadic ones that are gone, that are dead, or about to be dead, you know, they're not doing well. As you come up, as you come in the driveway off of, was it Cornell?
Right.
If you go to the left of that, that's, that's all right, it's not bad, but I also noticed there, they did a staked section. They have one row and they have a staked section behind it.
Right.
If you go in that driveway and go to the right, at the very beginning they did that, like eight to ten trees in, further down, it's all single trees. And like I say, you get down towards the end, I'm not in favor of releasing that until those trees had done something, you know, they've done something.
He, he is correct, 'cause I did walk down there recently, but I thought that, you know, that he had agreed that they met their level and stuff, but there are some dead, dead trees way down the end, heading down towards, down along Cornell Drive, Canal Drive, heading down towards the end of Cornell Drive. And they are single tree, single row trees too.
Yeah, and tha- and that was approved. The single row was double row up and then single row.
Right.
But I also talked to one of the Navies there, and he happens to be the house down where all the dead trees are, and I'm not sure if he was, I told him to log in, 'cause they, you know, you come to the meeting, you'll log in, and they ended up, it's a case of, yeah, he wasn't pleased with it at all.
Yeah, well, they can be replaced, but i- if you vote not to do it, then I'll have to talk with them about replacing them. I, I still don't think we should do another one year. I mean, it's been, been, um...
Almost three, right?
Well, I mean, what's the struggle? How can they, they've replaced, they've replaced. What are they doing for trees? They're not putting the right trees?
It's just our variety.
It's just our variety, and the deer. A lot of it's the deer.
Well, it is the deer, but I mean, that was the whole idea. I mean, we were talking about that. That was supposed to be a deer-resistant albatross going in there. So if it's the deer that's killing them, they're not putting the right tree, they're not putting the right albatross in.
Right.
'Cause that was supposed to have been a deer-resistant albatross when they did. 'Cause we've had that discussion on numerous projects for a lot of years.
We even had the, on that one, from the, the get-go on it.
Yeah.
I disagree with the deer issue, you know, for the fact that when I walked in...
Some of them are. Paul and I would admit, some of them have deer problems.
Yeah.
But what happened, when I walked that on Monday, Tuesday, I didn't see any deer, deer footprints.
That's not even the deer. The deer know the deer, because they'd be eaten up to a certain height, and then there would be nothing above it.
Yeah.
If it's dying all the way down to the ground, it's not deer.
Yeah, I have pi- I have pictures of it here.
Well, if, if you so choose not to release the bond, then I'll, I will talk with them, and when the s- snow gets away, we can look at trying to release it. But at some point, they're, they're gonna wanna know, you know, at some point, when can it be released? Are you gonna require another one year after this? Which...
I mean, I just, what I don't understand is what they're putting in there for trees. If this is with three years now, why, why do they keep dying? I guess that's more my question.
Well, let me ask this, do they put in rhododendrons or something like that?
No, we can't start changing it. We can't start changing that. No, but I'm just wondering if the soil that they're using underneath there is a problem. I think that's where more of the issue is. If you're planting in a bunch of rocks, albatross aren't gonna plant, aren't gonna grow. If it's dying in one side, I'm wondering whether that mound is all rock and it's not, there's nothing there to, to live on.
Right. And like I said, I, I took pictures of it, and...
There's probably about, about eight or nine that are just like way out there.
Unless you're getting them replaced. We're gonna hold the bond. I, I don't know whether you wanna do a percentage for that, for just those trees, or we just hold the whole bond until it gets done. I would hold it for at least one growing season, so we'll enter next, you know, next winter, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so I'd take a vote to...
Can we give a, can I have a motion to somewhere on that effect?
Uh, will we, will we continue this, or just...
No, I would just take a vote that you're, that you, to not release the bond, and that, and that the dead plant material needs to be replaced.
All right, I make that motion, so motion.
Do you have a date certain, like you said, beginning of the winter?
Well, I...
They said they were gonna ask that question. I wouldn't, we don't need to put that into here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna...
Just, they're voting yes or no, that's really what it's coming down to.
You know, it could be an issue with the sun over there, too. Do they get enough sun, or do they get too much sun?
It's full sun.
These are getting sun, it's, like I said.
I think we need to motion before we discuss it.
Yeah.
I made a second.
Continue motion?
I made the motion, yes. To not pay the bond at this time until...
To not release?
Not release.
Until the dead plant material is replaced.
Right.
I second.
Anybody, any other discussion on it?
Well, maybe they should stake some chicken wire around them until they fully, fully set in or something.
He's not coming back.
Yeah, no, but the new ones, they're talking about.
That's what I mean.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay.
They, they could, you know, use a more deer-resistant variety to...
Okay.
But you know, resistant and proof are two different, completely two different words. The deer eat everything in my yard. It doesn't matter. If it's green, they eat.
Item number, item number three, a continued public hearing. We held a petition of applicant and owner, VFW Brucewood LLC, thirty Ellis Road, God bless you. Newton, Mass. is represented by attorney Barry Ock Primis, nine oh nine Washington Street, Stoughton, for case file SPP twenty-four dash zero zero three, special permit per section seven point one. Flexible residential development. This proposal is to create twenty single-family dwelling unit residential development in approximately twenty-eight acre parcel with related infrastructure. The property is located zero Eagle Rock Road, located behind one Eagle Rock Road. Assesses map eight lot seventeen, residential A, R, A zoning district. They requested a continuance to April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Um, one question I have is, how many times are we gonna continue this?
Um, once, because this is a brand-new, um...
Oh, they've redone, they've...
Yeah, this is a brand-new application, with the subdivisions now en void, so this, they just continued this from the, uh... This would be the second continuance. So, they've switched engineers, has been the problem. Their engineer they had was not doing them justice. So...
Can I have a motion to accept the continuance?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number four, um... Here? I'll give you a breath. I'll read all this. You get two seconds to get a breath. A continued public hearing. We held a petition of the applicant property owner, BP AZ Holdings Forty LLC, for the site plan review under section ten point six, for site improvements surrounding buildings one, two, and six, to include parking lot restoration, restriping, traffic marking, signage, new sidewalks, landscaping, and restoration of the stormwater basin. In addition, they are seeking an after-the-fact approval for alterations of the right-of-way and site improvements from front of buildings three, four, and five. The applicant is represented by High Point Engineering. The property is located on Tosca Drive at the following number, building numbers and addresses. Building one dash twenty-nine, two ninety to three twelve Tosca Drive, building number two, two fifty to two eighty Tosca Drive, building number three, one seventy-one to one seventy-nine Tosca Drive, building number four, one oh one to one eleven Tosca Drive, building number five, seventy-one to eighty-five Tosca Drive, building number six, two hundred to two thirty-two Tosca Drive. Assesses map thirty-two lot seven, map thirty-one lots thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-five, and forty-seven in the industrial I zoning district. Can a representative, whoa!
I am here. Thank you everyone.
I authorized people to come and talk.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Nicole Langley. I'm an associate with High Point Engineering, representing the applicant. So, we were before this board two weeks ago, kinda going over the project itself, and we had gone through a technical review process with the engineering department, as well as Phil Roth and the planning department. And at the time, we had started making some of the changes that we discussed in response to comments. Since the last hearing, we submitted a response to comments letter back. We addressed all of the comments that were there, including, um, this is the gym. I'll move you back to that. We had the existing conditions plan updated to show the proper, um, the proper property line at building six. That old cul-de-sac is no longer there. We added the tree line to the plan here and here to show the work associated with the restoration of the existing detention basin that's located within the stream and easement for the benefit of the original Gold's Gym. Some of the other changes we made based on discussions with the town was to increase the impervious coverage of the site. So, this is part of Tosca Drive I mentioned is private. We've added both on-street parking and then private parking for the buildings, so building two, building one, and building six is on the other side I'll show you. We've created these landscape islands, pedestrian walkways. We've added some sidewalk for a continu- continuous pedestrian walkway between the buildings. We added this new landscape island, some landscaping along the buildings, building one mostly. And we are proposing to restore the existing detention basin that was constructed for the Gold's Gym. It has since been unmaintained and overgrown. We are proposing to restore it back to its original condition. We also are providing additional parking over on this side. Today, this area is like a gated lay-down area. It's undeveloped. It's just basically a dirt finish. We're proposing to put gravel in there and some new parking spaces. And then at building six, again, building two, building six, we're doing some more landscape islands. There was no designated parking spaces at building six that exist today, so we're providing dedicated parking spaces along with dedicated loading areas at both buildings two and six. We did a drainage design for both to address the additional changes. We're adding, we're decreasing the impervious coverage by forty-nine hundred square feet. And the basin in the back, the reason I brought the gym picture was to show this was their design plan. This area here was designed to be collected through a drainage system and discharged to the basin. That is not going to change, and we are not proposing to put any additional water to that basin. If anything, we're decreasing the impervious coverage that's going to that basin slightly. There was a discussion about constructing a sediment four bay for pretreatment as part of that basin. Looking at the original design plans, there was a proposed storm scepter eighteen hundred installed in this location, just upstream from the discharge. We did go on-site, and if you look at the response to comments, we added pictures of this cover. It is a storm scepter cover, so it was installed. So the need for a separate sediment four bay is not required. We did provide, in the storm water report, we provided the O and M plan for our new improvements, as well as the O and M plan that was issued for the, from the engineer for the Gold's Gym. As I mentioned before, the applicant is more than happy to restore the basin, but they would like the gym to remain the responsible party as in the original O and M. So those are the major updates that we talked about since the last time. I know we discussed, you know, how much parking we're increasing. Overall, we're adding seventy-nine new parking spaces throughout the six buildings in the park.
Within existing paved areas.
Within existing paved areas, correct. We're not adding additional, right.
They're just adding the markings for...
Right, we're creating those spaces where before it was kind of a free-for-all.
The question I have for that is, the on-street parking, is that on the town's property?
So there is some, um...
Yes.
So what you see here, this is all private property. The, the, right this line here is where it goes from public road to private. So these are all on private property. The improvements that we were doing, that after-the-fact improvements to buildings three, four, and five, which are down this area, but in your plan, we are adding parallel parking within the right-of-way, and we are proposing to go to the board of selectmen as the street commissioners for approval for the public board.
Okay, the only comment I would have on that is, if it's gonna be, if they grant you the parking on there, is that those vehicles to be removed during overnight parking?
Yeah, we'll work whatever, whatever they require. They're not part of the building parking, they're just...
They're public right-of-way, public parking. They're not parking, they're, the parking they added is in the public right-of-way. That is public parking, not private parking for the, the business.
Okay, but during the day, people from the business are going to, most likely, park there. The question being is, if one or two individuals for some reason decide to leave the car overnight during the winter months, they're subject to being...
Towed, ticketed, just like anyone else.
Okay.
Yes. That's fine. We comply with all of that.
Okay.
Yeah. And the reason this application was, is before us is because they came in, we contacted the owner, and like, you, you, you can't, you can't pave our right-of-way and add parking. We brought them in, we had a discussion, and then it was, you, you own all of these buildings, says, oh, well, we wanna do this, and it turned into a much larger discussion, and then they hired High Point. And then we decided, and we worked with them and said, you know, to create, take the bad situation that's up there by creating those landscaped islands, the sidewalks, it, it makes it like a road now, even though it's all private.
Right.
This is a, from an engineering and planning standpoint, this is a thousand percent improvement to what I call a no-man's land up there.
No, no, I, I get that. The, the other thing is, on Google Maps, it shows Tosca Drive going behind the building. Now, is that on the private side of it?
Yeah, that Google, don't, don't rely on Google Maps. No. The private road starts, stops, right there.
Right, so...
Anything beyond this, this, this line here is private.
Right. Google may call it Tosca Drive. It's still called Tosca Drive, even though it's private.
Nicole, is the...
They're calling the Gulf of Mexico something.
All the gray areas out in front, I'm just trying, so I was trying to look at the plans. Are you repaving all of that, or is this just a mill and overlay, or are you not even doing that?
The majority of it's mill and overlay. I think we talked about last time, right at this area, there's a, an existing retaining wall that we're gonna replace, and there's a significant slope, I believe it's about eight percent, almost like a bump. So we are proposing full-depth regrading in here to smooth that bump out. All of this in the front of building two will be mill and overlay. The roadway will be mill and overlay, and then we're doing some full depth in front of building one to work with the grades and the sidewalk.
Okay, and then mill and overlay to tie it all together?
Correct.
Okay.
So it looks like a finished product.
So it'll be all new when it's all said and done? Where's the line furthest down? It's just gonna be right in front of that building two right there? Is that where it's gonna stop? Right after the bump? And then everything else is gonna be the same, or...
Yes, right after the bump. Everything else will be the same. There'll be no additional work down to the lower buildings.
We're going up towards, okay, so...
They've already done the work in front of buildings four and five?
Yeah, three, four, and five. And you'll, I have comparison plans in the set to show what the plans look like prior to the work being done and what it looks like today.
So, Mr. Chairman, we've reviewed it. We've reviewed the revisions, um, planning and engineering, um, you know, wanna commend the applicant. They've kind of gone above and beyond what we had anticipated and expected, and, and so we're recommending approval subject to the conditions that are identified in the, in the order of conditions. And then the, one of the things that we did discuss at the last meeting, one of the conditions talks about, they have to go, receive approval from the select board as the road commissioners. So, and then they, and then the, the rest of the stuff are more of the same.
So let me ask you a question. If they don't get that approval, what, what happens with this decision, or what happens to the work that they're doing? Is it just gonna be a bunch of...
They won't, they do not need approval, excuse me, Nick. They do not need approvals for anything, almost anything on this. It's, they would have to,
It's weird to park there.
They would have to restore the stuff in front of buildings four and five.
And they're aware of that.
And they're, and they're aware. We don't, you know, engineering and planning, when it, when, for the road commissioners, they'll submit it to us for our review, and we will say, oh, they've already gone through site plan review, they've addressed all of our concerns, and, you know, we don't, you know...
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I do wanna take back one comment. We did talk about building four at the last meeting. There is a depression that exists today in the easement accessies at next to building four that holds water during rainfall events. We are proposing to regrade that and pr- um, restore the positive pitch to the drainage systems, and we'll eliminate that bonding area.
It's a small ponding.
Yeah. Okay.
So, on the roadway, can, can you explain the, the curving part? I mean, you have, I see that you have granite curving going in some spots, but what's the curving gonna be on all of that roadway?
It's Cape Cod berm and then monolithic curve at the sidewalks.
And do you cover it just in front of your building though, right? Ours at all? Is the whole road getting...
No, just in front of our buil- so, what they did at three, four, and five, could you, oh, you have one of the comparison plans, please?
Um... What sheet?
Um, it's the first re, right after the, um...
Oh, yeah, C one oh one, oh, one oh two, right in there.
Yeah, one oh one. Right after the existing conditions plan. Um, so what they did on those buildings, they added some Cape Cod berm, like around their existing landscape areas. They added some berm at the edge of, you know, the right-of-way. Um, so it's just around those buildings, some curving. Um, and then, once we get to this area where all the new work is gonna be, um, you know, we're adding some sidewalks in front of building six, which will be curved, and then all of the, this, we're gonna curb all of these islands, curb these sidewalks, and then provide curbing in front of the monolithic curve at building one in the back.
So the sidewalk's gonna get granite curbed, right?
Well, it'll be monolith, it'll be continuous concrete course. It won't be granite, it'll be concrete.
And we're, and we're fine with the curving?
You're fine with that?
Yes. It's, it's, it's private road. It's, it's not, it's not public. It's not public, and, and, you know...
It should be, yeah. It's one of the issues.
We're, we're fine with the curving.
I want, I want to see something up there, and they say, we're worth a wearing, we're not for this.
No, we, engineering and planning are, are fine with the curb. We're recommending approval subject to the conditions that are identified in the, uh, report.
So, just going back to my initial question, which was what I was here, was, is, I mean, they would be prepared to bring us to move these parking spaces in, or not, how the parking is...
Or remove them and restore the lawn area that was there. There's no curving that exists there today, so they were trying to define their property.
No, no, I understand. The only issue is with the parking. The building needs parking, and if they don't get it here, they're gonna have to redo everything to get parking.
Well, they would either use what they have on-site. They just, they, yeah, I don't see them getting more parking unless they strip more of the existing pavement, but they would lose those. They could pull it back.
Or they would have to go pull, pull it back and bring in head parking.
Right. Into the, yes.
Okay.
Hey, I didn't see any handicap spots there. Did they make, missing the drawing on that or...
They have handicap on, the existing buildings four and five are exactly, you know, they're, there's no work on the private property. It's all in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
So there, it's whatever the existing handicap spaces are. And then the new modified ones, there are handicap, and they comply with our requirements.
Okay. Okay.
That, that little triangle up there, I realize it belongs to their, their property. This little one right here.
This, yes, it belongs to them.
What is the condition of that area?
Um, it's paved, but it's not in the best shape. Um, you know, we're not proposing to do anything in there because it's not our property. There's a guardrail in there. There's a hydrant that's located like in the corner. Um, and they, as you can see, they, there's some trucks in there.
Right.
We're definitely gonna define our property versus their, theirs. Um, you know, we won't be using that. It, it's kind of a no-man's land, as you can see by the tree line. They're not really using it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, you know, you're going to all this, and then you're gonna have this little dirty spot.
I know. I know, I know.
Bad house in the neighborhood.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the site plan approval for Tosca Drive, six buildings for project case SP twenty-five dash zero zero one, as it is written?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nicole, thank you.
Thank you both for your time. I appreciate it.
And we will sign that at the end of the meeting?
Okay, I have to go up for ConCom.
Have fun.
You'll send that to me, or?
I think he's gonna meet you up there.
You want me to have that down?
No, I have to, it'll get signed tonight, and then I recorded it with the town clerk.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then I will then send you an email that says, add twenty, add twenty-one days to tomorrow, and that's your appeal period.
How many you got?
Yeah. Oh, I know, I know this. Sorry. I'm a little lost.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, I have to go for five minutes to the ConCom, so I'm gonna let Nick kind of take over and kind of go over the comments, and then I will, I have a lot of discussion and comments regarding, you know, opposing the landscape removal and fencing and all sorts of stuff that I would like to discuss.
Item number five, a new public hearing will be held with petition of the applicant property owner, Zoppo Associates LLC, for site plan review under section ten point six, for the contractor's yard at the rear of the existing building. With the addition of a combination of paved and gravel outdoor storage areas, removal of two existing detention bonds, and replaced with an underground drainage system, installation of retaining walls, and screen fencing, and modification to the existing landscape planting areas. The applicant is represented by Merrill Engineers and land surveyors. The property is located at eleven fifty Turnpike Street, Stoughton, Mass., oh two oh seven two. Assesses map eighty-one lot fifty-nine, in the industrial I zoning district. Can I have a motion to open the meeting, please?
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So can, I guess, Nick, we get an expla- an explanation of what's going on, or should we put the, um, do we have somebody to represent in the mayor?
Yep.
Oh, why don't you kind of give us things, what, what this whole thing is, and then we can kind of open that?
We have...
There you go.
Sure. Deb Callen with Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. Um, I'm splitting time with Nick Courtney, who's another engineer in our office who's up in ConCom right now. So, we, we did start out up in conservation. Obviously, we've got resources in the interior of the property. Originally, what we were looking to do is, there is some gravel area, yard area in the back, so this is the existing conditions now. A retaining wall, a block retaining wall holding back that gravel area with two opening detention basins on the north and south side of the building. What David Zoppo, I can speak to his online too, so if we meet him, we can reach out. What he's looking to do would be to expand this yard area in the back, and to do that, we're converting the two detention basins to subsurface stormwater facilities and providing additional pretreatment to both of those facilities. And in discussions with the commission originally, this expansion in the back was going to be all gravel, so we were increasing our pavement impervious area. During the process, though, it was felt with the commission that they would prefer it to be paved. David would be more than happy to have it paved. So, we went back, which then triggered us to come before you because we're increasing imperviousity on the set. So, with that, this shows we are extending the retaining wall to create a larger rear yard, basically a contractor's yard in the back of the building. For conservation, we're looking to do some plantings similar to what was previously... Um, for conservation, we're looking to do some plantings similar to what was previously, um, planted and established on the property. And, um, in addition to this, just FYI, is that we're looking to do some invasive, uh, management on the property with conservation, I believe there's bittersweet and some not weed, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Out there, so, um, that will be part of, um, our order of conditions hopefully from conservation. So, my understanding was parking layout here, well, we, we always had it on plan for about two years now, sounds like speaking with Will, he saw some of it, but not all of it, not sure how, but so, we put it all on the plan, so that now we've got an all encompassing plan. What they did was came for the town to do a minor modification to provide some, uh, garage doors in the front, so they adjusted some of the parking in the front. There was no increase in impervious, just sort of rejiggering of the parking spaces. Um, one of the things, one of the comments that Bill had was we have one parking space which is not fully compliant with the spaces, and he, he, um, asked if this could be removed, we don't need it, I know David would like to keep it because, uh, requirements for parking, but, um, if it's something the board really doesn't want us to have, we could open that up, um, and create a landscaping area, uh, for the parking. I, I think, um, you know, complying with the stormwater management require, requirements for the two subsurface systems there, you probably can't see them very well, but they're a dashed, um, rectangular box here, as well as a long rectangular box here, we have catch basins with pretreatment, or we have an existing catch basin to pretreatment prior to the structures. Uh, this system here will be an infiltration system, we did, uh, go out and redo, uh, new soil testing in there to confirm groundwater. We had appropriate depth here, we were off by, I don't know, four inches, getting the two feet, um, for this system here, so we seal, we sealed that one. So, this would be just a detention basin, this is infiltration, we do need the peak rate, peak volume, groundwater recharge, uh, TSS removal for the site. So, hopefully, it's a very robust, uh, drainage facilities for the property, we did, uh, create new operation and maintenance plans for the site, so that all of this will, um, continue to be maintained. I think some of the questions that, um, I understood from the technical review was more focused on some of the fencing, what we ideally were looking for and what David was looking for. He wanted, um, is very concerned about the security for the property, and knowing the town's requirement for screening for the, for the contractor's yard, we were looking to put the ten foot fence along the property line, um, I think maybe this is something we'll, we'll talk about.
Isn't there already some sort of fence that's along that property line right now?
No.
Not this property, the adjacent property there is, yeah, so, right.
Oh, of the one that's, yeah, okay, it's not that one.
Is that the one that's moving the fence out a couple of feet, the next, the property next to it, I see the, they've put post in.
Oh, did they?
It looks like they, it's either that one, one way or the other, to move the fence, looks like they wanna move the fence out, but, back to yours, there's no fence there.
Yeah, that. Hmm. Sure, so currently, we have, uh, large overgrown arborvitae's along the property line here, and David would like to remove those and put the security fence in, I know I was speaking with Bill, and I think this might be something that we'll talk about a little bit more, is potentially, um, if there's a concern with that removing of those trees, that we could provide, uh, some type of landscaping mitigation along here, to sort of replace that vegetation, um, and then, hopefully, sorting out how we can address meeting both your requirement for screening, as well as meeting, uh, David's, a need for security for the property. Um, so with this, we were linking up with the existing, uh, fencing on the abiding property, providing gates at both of the two driveways, carrying the fence around. Um, I think Bill was mentioning this doesn't have to be ten feet, but, um, trying to do double duty with the fencing.
So, are you, but you're leaving the landscape area with the Cape Cod berm and stuff, and you're just gonna be running a fence, but you're leaving that still, all the way back in, it says, for example, there's a large Cape Cod berm area right here, it covers this all of this area, and I'm just wondering if that area here is, which is presently landscaped, is that gonna stay that way, or is that, is it all being moved?
This is all staying in here on site and in, in the right of way, we're just looking to put the fence along the property line. Uh, I believe there's boulders along, uh, Turnpike Street, uh, in, in the right of way, and then the arborvitae's run along the property line, this is all lawn.
I mean, I get, you, we do require fencing, so I don't get, but there, it doesn't require it across the front of the property, the way that you're looking for it.
Sure.
It's usually a separation fence, people that look for security normally have it further back in their site, so that it blocks off, you know, the, the, for example, from the building to the edge of the site, or something that blocks off the rear where there would be storing materials or storing trucks or whatever else, but the front of the sites we usually like to keep open, for the fact, just like that store, right now, you got the huge eight or ten foot fencing, you know, that's all you see is the fence, it's just, it, it's bad, it's ugly, it doesn't look good.
Right, right.
I just don't wanna continue that going down that street the way it is right now, that's kinda what I'm looking for, I think even right now,
Sure. Mm-hmm.
if we look at the site that's further down, that's being developed, I don't know, going further down, Old Maple, that's being developed up there, I think we've got some, um, white PVC,
Yes, I. Oh.
and then we've got some chain link at one end of it, but they're using the screen chain link, so, uh, we're trying to keep it, you know, that's sorta still looking good when it's getting further down the street.
Sure.
That would be my only thing, we'll put a ten foot fence that close to the street, I know you step back a little bit, but it's still that close to the street, would kinda be a, almost a detrimental thing. Um, we have a similar project coming up, we've asked them to drop it down to a six foot fence, because it's gonna be a construction yard material, it's gonna be a powerful reblock drive, different situation, different setup, but, um, I'm just trying to see how this would work out, I mean, in the front of it, are they just using it for parking, uh, regular cars and all, the equipment's gonna be all back, that's what it looks like if I look at the layout of the property.
Yeah, I, I would have to defer to David, other than the fact that I do know that they did put the two overhead doors here for circulation through the building, so there will be construction vehicles accessing.
Was he the, hi David, oh.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I could speak to that, I, I, and I agree, we, you know, we, we put a, the previous owner for the property really let the place go to heck, so, you know, we're, we're just, we're, we're trying to, you know, we've put quite a bit of money into the property, those arborvitae's that are up front, uh, really don't serve much purpose, they, they completely overgrown. Um, I just, we wanna restrict access to it, if, if, if there's a way to do that, we can, we, I don't need a ten foot high fence in the front. I'm not looking to create a, a, a huge barrier there, um, just, I need to carry something across there to, to maintain, uh, to restrict traffic coming in through there. We, we've had issues, I mean, we have expensive stuff that's stored outside, um, you know, and they, that's gonna happen, that's gonna happen, either whether it's in the front or the back, you know, we, we're just trying to restrict that, we're, we're certainly open to suggestions, I could kick that fence back a little bit and put plantings on the front. Uh, I don't need to make it ten feet, if you want a six foot height fence, and puts them out, uh, you know, some, some intermittent plantings in front of it, we're, we're happy to do that.
Is the, is the, is the front of the building, is there gonna be equipment there, David, or is it just, um, gonna be regular employee parking, uh, type of thing?
There's employee parking, but yeah, I mean intimately, the mechanic struck gets parked out front there, uh, you know, so, so there is stuff that's left out there overnight.
Could, could I make a suggestion that perhaps you landscape with a berm on that, and then plant into the berm, and maybe you could use like a, uh, if you're concerned about fencing, you could hide the fence into that berm in the planting.
My comment, my.
When you say, you're talking about like a, like a mounded area, you're.
Mound, mounded area or something.
I raised it two or three feet.
Yeah, and then plant into that with native, you know, uh, uh, low growing shrub and stuff, and you could weave a fence in there if you're concerned about people going in through the fence and stuff like that. I mean, it, it, it's all, it's good, you've got a lot of area there that you could really do something very attractive.
Oh, I, we could certainly, if, if you're suggesting that, as long as I can maintain a gate across the accessways, if the suggestion is to put, you know, mound, mound something up three feeters, and put out a mountain across the front, I'm, I'm probably okay with that.
Yeah. It would look very attractive, I'm sure.
So, just so I can get a, Nick, why don't you get into what your comments were when you went through this, just so I can get everybody's stuff on the same board, just get, one item of it.
Um, sure, um, thank you for the presentation, um, you actually covered it really well, um, there's, there's not much as far as the engineering department, um, had for comments, um, to be honest, these are mainly Bill's comments, um, as far as drainage, uh, site layout and all that, we, we were good with it, um, to speak on the fence,
Okay.
Uh, Craig and I, w- uh, were discussing the gates themselves, it might be a good idea to set that fence back, um, as it's been suggested, um, so that someone coming into the property that has to unlock the gate can pull into the driveway with their vehicle.
Which we've talked about.
To get out and unlock the gate, so that they don't have to be parked on the street, if that gate is so close to the street, you're not gonna be able to, um, get that vehicle off the road, so, if they do set the, the fence back and then provide some, some landscaping along the front of the fence, that might be a, a solution for that.
My thought, my thought of this is, I go by this all the time, and what happens is, the bushes that are there now, actually look nice, they're from the building, has cleaned up a lot, because, as you mentioned, the previous tenant, I mean, it turned, was a, basically a junkyard, he, and, God knows how much has run into the soil there, because I actually saw them flushing out frac, frac tanks there, a couple of years ago, like ten years ago. But, what I also noticed, I was down there, either Saturday or Sunday, and I looked, I saw there was a whole big pile of snow. Did that come off of your property, and was that pushed to the back end of Old Maple Street or, around the corner on Maple Street, just past the telephone pole? Do you know what I'm?
You just, oh, you're talking further up the street?
If, if you look on the side of your property on Old Maple Street, okay, if you come down Turnpike and, instead of pulling in, into your property, right, actually, if you go up to your main yard, that's up and back, there was a big pile of snow just past this lot here, and it looked like they plowed out this property at eleven fifty Turnpike, and that's where the snow ended up, you know?
It, well, you know, we own both pieces, and so it, it could be that that pile of snow is just what came from the old, uh, the one sixty old Maple Street piece.
Okay, it would just look like that, your property at Turnpike Street was cleared out, and they kinda pushed it around the corner to make room, and I wasn't sure if that's where.
Yeah, they, they shouldn't have done that, tech, technically, the town's supposed to plow, that's a whole nother story as far as Old Maple Street with, with the, with the town maintenance of Old Maple Street, but, but if there was, if there was snow pushed up there, that obviously, we'd make sure that, that, the town's supposed to maintain Old Maple Street.
Right, well, like I said, I saw that, it just, what I saw is a drastic improvement from what was there from the tenant before, but from the tenant before, that bar was not set very high, but it's a much, much better, and the shrubs that are there, is it possible, if you want a security fence, to leave the shrubs and put the fence behind the, uh, the shrubs?
No, I, honestly, I prefer to start from scratch, I just, what's there now is just completely overgrown, and I, I, it's just, it's not attractive, and I really can't make it attractive, and I can't incorporate that into trying to secure the site, I would prefer to just, we could set the gate back, I can mound up some soil in the front, and we could run some, you know, uh, a row of arborvitae's along the top of that, and keep them maintained, would be my preference.
Okay. This is where we differ.
Any other questions from anybody else?
Oh, you're planting, the, um, because it gives the side, you do the plant.
They, they have no planting plan.
The, these plants that are in the plans that are for the restoration areas in the back, so, um, I can double check that, because I'm a wetland scientist,
Right, conservation.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I would assume they're gonna be the smaller five, three, five gallon.
Three, three gallon. Paul, they, um, I, I didn't really require them to put in a, the typical landscape plan, it's, it's a restoration for approved by conservation. On the detail sheet, they have a plant list with quantities and sizes, uh, for all of the mix for the thing.
Okay.
Um, you know.
It's monitored by a wetland scientist.
And it's, and it's monitored by the wetland scientist.
Okay.
Um, I know you talked about my comments on the landscaping, um, uh, I'm, as I said, I'm opposed to, and I don't know where you are with this, I'm opposed to.
So, one of the, so, one of the things that came up is that, it, Paul brought up is that we would, we couldn't mound up, and, and David seemed to agree with it, create a mound in this area here to breeze this up a couple of feet from the, uh, within this curved area that they maintain.
Correct, it's got a lot of width.
Right, and to try to create some height in there to be able to put a fence on top of it, and then leave some planting in this area, where he's removing the arborvitae's, that would add, he's gonna need to create a landscape.
Right, and he would need, and, and I would recommend not using arborvitae, they, uh, it's, it's, um, they need a, you'd need a landscape plan that provides shrubs that do screening and some, and provide a handful of, you know, canopy type trees, I can work with you on landscaping, you can always, you know, give me a call on that. Um, I don't believe a ten foot fence.
The other. No, we've already talked, don't believe a ten foot fence, especially where we're going to breeze it up.
Okay.
The other thing is, he's asking for a chain link fence, which is obviously not allowed, so, we're back to the discussion, do we want a chain link fence in this area? If we do, do we go to a block type of fence, or do we try to go to a, you know, the picket fence we talked about on Page Street, and go back to that type of fence?
I would recommend. Yeah. Yeah. I, I would recommend, uh, the black on the front, black vinyl with the landscaping in front of it, and not create a wall that you can't see in, 'cause you're gonna want, he's gonna, from a security standpoint, if I owned it, I'd wanna be able to see in and out, and if somebody gets in there, no one can see it from the street, so, um.
I, I agree without creating a wall, like I said, I was thinking of almost going with the vertical ones we're doing on Page Street, that type of fencing.
I think the, the, the screening, vertical portions should be on anything.
No, 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 I don't mean, yes, I, the screening, I'm, I'm guessing we're talking to other things, not so much, not, not trying to black out the fence, they have a fence that you can see through, but what we're doing on Page Street is with the vertical pickets, instead of going with a channel fence.
Are you talking about slats, that going?
Not the slats, no, forget the channel fence, a different type of fence.
Okay. Oh, oh, the, the, like the faux wrought iron, the like.
Exactly, the faux wrought iron fence, something along those lines, out in the front, or we, like you said, we go to a, the tight weave, um, chain link fence,
Oh, okay.
but again, it's something that the board has to approve, if we're gonna go to a channel fence, we have to approve that, because that is not on, allowed in our, in our bylaws.
What do we have across the street?
Can I, can I just, just to check, just for, for a moment, I, I don't, I don't necess, I like the idea of the mound, and if I could tightly space, and it wouldn't be a complete, you know, impervious screen, but if I could tightly space enough plantings across the top of that, I don't need the fence. I just need to prohibit vehicles from, from entering and exiting the property.
So you just need the gates, you just need.
All my hat with current setup is people could drive right through those god awful trees, so, I need, I need gates that be the driveways, and at least at the front of the building, if I could mound that up three or four feet, put some fairly tightly spaced plantings, and then put chain link fence along the back to act as the screening, I'm fine with that.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, I'm actually opposed to fencing at all in the front.
Oh, he's going, so.
So, I, I actually like the idea of mounding and landscaping, I, I did note on my plans that right next to the building in the front,
I'm, I'm.
um, that, the, uh, where's, um, um, where the building meets the front to the north area, right, I was thinking of, in order to meet the code requirement, it has to have, has to be screened, the storage area screened, so, right in this area right here, if there was a, the larger fence with a screen, that would screen the, this area from the front, and then one of the thoughts is, we've got the, with the work with the board is possibly the larger fence that, you know, it requires ten foot along the wall here, that then can, you know, screen portion of the back area.
Why would there need to be ten foot?
Well, it's, code requires it, unless the board wants something less.
On, on the, we're ten foot in this area, so.
The, the storage area is the only thing that has to be the, the screening, so I was trying to minimize a big massive amount of fencing.
Screen from view.
So I was thinking, instead of, you know, if they wanted to do the mounding and the landscaping here, it, the, the, the solid screen fencing, and.
He just, he still wants gates at the front though.
Oh, a gate, a gate at the front here, but I'm just talking about a, just.
Another set of gates, basically, he's gonna have to have.
Not a gate, it's just a, the, the fencing. Not a gate, it's just a, the, the fencing, a fencing screen.
I agree, but you still have to have a gate to get around that side, right, isn't he driving down there?
Uh, it, it, this, this portion's gravel, so you could have access there, but it's not a, a page or main circuit.
Do you need a gate?
I, I'd prefer to leave it as a, it, it would be a screened fence, but I would prefer to leave it as an, an offerable gate. The likelihood, it's, it's gonna be left closed, obviously.
Okay, so, whatever it is, it would have to be a fully screened fence with a gate right here, and then I'm thinking, instead of going down here in the wetlands, you, you wanna, you wanna try to avoid, void anymore with the ConCom as you, as you can, I, I'm gonna, I, I, I was just up with him, so I, I, you know, I'm thinking, one of my thoughts was the, the ten foot, or even if you wanted to do an eight foot, I, I'm fine with that. The screen fencing at the top of the wall, or right along here, um, and, and then would, would this open view shed area, would that be objectionable? Would that meet the intent of the bylaw for the planning board?
Open sheds.
Is that, feel like that, where you would put salt or something like that?
So, so if you put a s- right here, put, put the screen here, and then they, they landscaped here.
Right.
Would, it would just go along here, would this, you would still be able to see the storage area, like between here and here, this area, this way? And is, is that a problem? Or do you want, or do you need to do the, like I wrote here?
Well, this fence is going to continue around the top of this wall, right?
Well, no, why would you need to screen, screen it from the, the back in the wetlands, there's nothing back there.
Direction.
This is all wood.
No, I realize that, but you, there's not, the winter time, it's not wood, it's, it's deciduous trees, you're gonna see it from here.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it's wooded, but, and this is all gonna be, you're cutting all this down to be able to replant this area, that's gonna be a lot of low vultures.
That, that area is cleared currently, and so it'll be replanted.
So my point is that if we have a retaining wall here, plus if it's over a four foot wall, it needs to have some, a guardrail on it anyway.
Right, I, I, I think the only, I'm just saying, I think the only screening needs to be on, i- i- it doesn't need to screen, I don't think, screen the entire back. I think it's just, from the, the wall along to where the, where the mitigation area is, I think if you did that L, I believe that would screen sufficiently.
So, I guess, David, from your standpoint of view from a security, do you want a fence around the whole back?
Yeah, that was my question.
Uh, I, we, we typically would just put something, I don't want a ten foot fence across the back.
I'm, I'm not asking, but do you want a?
We, we would typically put, uh, you know, six foot fence up there just to act as a barrier, and, and mount it right to the wall, so I, we don't have a problem with that.
I, 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 I'm fine with six, if the board thinks that kind of meets.
I'm, I'm okay, because you already have a four foot retaining wall in here, or a three foot retaining wall.
Right.
It's two, two, two to three.
Two to three, okay, two to three, I see, yep, two to three, already that retaining wall, if we put a six foot fence, screened fence in this area, I don't have an issue with that. All right, I don't think we need a ten foot.
Would it go all the way, the entire back perimeter, or are you only thinking to?
Well, that would be for security, yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like you want.
Yeah, it sounds like you want, so, so from the top of the wall.
All the way around.
Way around.
Yeah, and, and I think that, that since it's in the back, if they wanted to do the six foot, um, I think they did provide a detailed, um, with a slat type in it, um.
Oh.
Oh, it was a diamond mesh fabric, I didn't understand what that.
Oh, but we are, if, we are anticipating that that would be weaved with a slat.
Weave with a slat?
Yeah.
In the back, I'm fine with that, but that's, that, that requires the board to make a specific finding.
Yeah, it's a black, you're gonna go with the black, the, that black vinyl fence.
Black vinyl. Meaning black vinyl over the chain, right?
Well, the chain link is black vinyl chain link, black vinyl chain, yeah, I mean.
With the slats?
With the slats.
With the slats, right.
But you don't only have the slat this area right here, right?
Well, the slat is gonna be along the back, and then on, I, I'm assuming he's gonna do, do the gates, he's gonna leave those open, or, what I was trying to get back to is the, over on Page Street where we did the, um, Tofu Factory and the other one that we're moving down the street, we went with a vertical type of wrought iron fence. I didn't know whether he could do the gates and those type of thing unless he wanted to screen that area too.
Yeah, I don't see him needing to, I think he just needs to figure out what kind of gate he, he wants.
We just need to create what I'm looking for, a gate, you just propose some sort of gate for those areas, all right? The other comment, Bill, you made about the dumpster pad, um, I realize it's, it's a screened in area, however, we do wanna have the dumpster pad isolated so that it doesn't, the dumpster just doesn't become something that's a moving target back there. We do want some sort of an enclosure to make sure that it is, is viable and into one spot, it's, it's hidden. And it doesn't just become, well, I don't like it there today, I'm gonna put it over there tomorrow, I'm gonna bring it back, and the next thing I know, I have it out here on the front, because it's easier for the truck to get.
Yeah, I, I think they should just use the same chain, the screening they're gonna use with it.
To match the fence.
The same fencing screening that they're gonna do it, to, to find that dumpster, so the dumpster doesn't get moved on a daily basis.
Now, is this the property line, uh, highlighted in yellow?
Well, we've been doing in the past.
Yeah.
Oh, and the fencing has been the white PVC fencing, but that has not been working really well.
They're, they're property law.
Especially a site like this, where it's wide open, and you go to six to eight feet with them, and we've been having a lot of problems with a lot of the previous sites we were working with to try to do it.
I know, they stain, I've seen a lot that are stained, which is.
Well, it's not only the stain, but a lot of them are blowing out, depending on how well they're constructed, some of them are constructed very well, but others aren't being constructed right or properly, and we're finding they're just getting blown out, they crack and break and whatever, so, we've kinda, we're trying to stay away from that a little bit more than we were.
For vinyl?
The vinyl, the vinyl, trying to stay away from that more than we were, but, and that's part of the reason, but the screening on this is important, and then trying to see what's at the face, the front face, not to have chain link, but to come up with somewhat of a type of fencing that is more, kind of, you know, nicer or, or, you know, looks better than what a chain link fence would look, right in your face as you're coming in the street.
Sure.
Okay. The staining is mostly from the corner for the trees.
I'm sorry.
Staining on the vinyl.
But it comes from the trees, really?
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah, lichen and.
Lichen, yeah, yeah, yeah. Or the sprinkler system, because of the rust in the water.
Near, near, near our office when I drive over the door, can I see it, and it, it was this beautiful, nice white fence, nice long, and then all of a sudden, there's these, just like sections of them that are all yellow and stained, it looks like rust.
Yeah, because they take round, that's the square of the grass.
So, yeah, so.
Just, uh, one, one.
Sorry.
Just, just, because I'm losing track, just a quick question, um, because I heard something about ornamental fence, would that, would that be an alternative for the front of the property? Yeah, versus mounding and putting the plantings, would you be amenable to some sort of ornamental fence?
Well, from, from a recommendation standpoint, if you wanna remove the entire landscaping, put the ornamental fence in, you, 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 the planning board's still gonna want.
Still gonna have to be all planted there?
There's gonna want some sort of landscaping, so, if you wanted to do an ornamental fence, or mounding and landscaping, i- it's, but it would be an ornamental fence with landscaping, or you could just do the mound and landscaping.
Okay, I guess the, yeah, that makes sense.
Um, and then the only other thing is, uh, and I know the engineer, uh, has mentioned this, is it's the gate. You know, let's say you do your mounding and it's more in the center of your island here, it's more in the center of your island, see where my cursor is?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to do it.
Yeah.
I, I have to do it on the wrong, get a different screen. Um, where your mounding is, if it's kind of in the center of the island here, uh, the problem that, uh, Craig has mentioned is, is that this gate needs to be pushed back, because we don't want a vehicle, e- when you're coming in, parking and hanging out into the street. So, I would think that the gate might need to be more incorporated back towards probably where the, where the, where the tangent of this radius starts, does that make sense?
Twenty, thirty feet from.
Make sure there's twenty feet, like a parking space.
Make sure there's about.
Right, at least twenty feet, uh, you do have, I would guess you've got probably fifteen feet already in the driveway.
It's almost there. Yeah. Put the same on Old Maple Street too.
Right, yeah, so maybe you add a little more, you, you add a little more, whatever, define the, the edge of the road, roadway a little bit better, and then, and then, but we, we do need that, it's about hanging out.
And just so, as another, because it capped further down Turnpike Street, when you put the mound, be sure you're on your side of the property line, it doesn't go onto town, because for some reason, the town gets funny about it looking good.
Well, the arbor, the arborvitae's are literally right on the edge of the right of way.
Right, but I'm just talking about the new mound going in, and what she's doing.
Yeah, we had a project, they put a big landscape mound, looks great, and it's, it's in our right of way.
But I just, but.
That's, that's my other question, is the right of way here.
The right of way is the black line right here.
Okay, because with the logistics center going in, say ten years down the road, if they wanna go and widen that section of Turnpike Street, you know, now while he has these plants.
Well, then, we, we would have to do a takings and the whole nine yards.
It's only gonna be to the property line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's why I asked for the property line.
We can't, we can't, we can't make him move back for anything, unless we knew there was a road, unless we knew, oh, we're, we're doing an intersection improvement at Old Maple and Turnpike, and we're gonna put a turn lane, and we're gonna do this, and we know that there's gonna be something there, then, we would then account for it, but now, uh, I'm.
I'm very protective of Turnpike Street.
I know you are, I know you are. So, I think you kinda got the.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think, so if we, uh.
One more rendition and you'll be in.
Um, I did, I talked with the, uh, the one thing with the, um, this doesn't meet it, so, and this is all paved, um, you're overparked to, to look at just making that as a, a landscape down, like, we discussed that.
But the owner would like to keep the space if he could, more parking, the better for him, was his, um, idea.
Okay, then he might, might wanna, uh, shave a little bit off of this.
Right, if you're gonna be doing some paving there, you might want to just add some pavement.
Just make, make that lane wider so that you can.
To get that access, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Compliant space size and drive aisle width.
Right.
Sure.
In that area.
The other question is handicap parking.
Minimum, even though, even though the drive aisle's twenty-four.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. You, you can, twenty, we will not go lower than twenty-two, and that, that would be sufficient, because it's private property.
And then the other thing, you should, you're gonna have to put together a lighting plan.
And then I asked about lighting, is there lighting on the building?
So there is lighting on the building, it's on the, uh, all sides, uh, east and west, and it's south, none on the north.
Okay. Okay, you need to identify it on the plan, put the cut, put the cut sheets on, and I need to, and, and, and I have to have the, the, the foot candle.
Even though it's existing?
It's existing, you're not adding to it.
So we're not adding any.
Okay, just identify it on that.
I saw that you.
And the cut sheet in the, of what it is would be helpful.
I saw you added the business logo sign on the building.
I will have to defer that to Dave, if he's still with us.
But, yeah, that, we put the, the sign is on the front of the side of the building, correct?
Right, is that the only sign you plan on having?
Yes.
Okay, by the way, it looks very nice.
Thank you, we hope it's a great improvement, you know, beyond what was there previously.
Like I said, the, the bar wasn't set that high from them.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, at least we cleared that.
And I will say, the other thing, because I've lived here for thirty-five years, I've noticed your trucks coming out and all that, and they always look in great shape, so, I commend you for that.
Oh, we appreciate that, we try to be, be a little particular and try and run a clean operation, so I appreciate that.
I'd like to do a quick summary, just to make sure that I've captured everything that we've discussed, um, so I'm gonna start northeast corner. We're gonna adjust and make sure that the, both gates have at least a minimum of twenty feet in front of it, so that we don't have anybody stopping in, in the, in the road la- um, lanes, uh, look into, uh, a berm landscaping or ornamental, I'm gonna let Dave and I, we'll have some.
Or ornamental fence and landscaping, either one.
Tipping, correct, around gate again, then, from this point, we would have a, did we agree on a six foot screened fence?
Six foot.
So, I'm assuming that we're good with a, a black vinyl chain link fence slatted screen that wraps around here, and then have a, could this be six foot as well over here?
Yeah, yeah, with the gate.
With, with a gate.
I would just carry that fence across.
Okay. Okay, great, and then we'll look into, uh, if maintain, if Dave would still like to maintain this, we'll modify this so that we have the appropriate spacing.
Yeah, and just provide twenty-two, you don't need to go to the twenty-four.
And your dumpster enclosure with the same fence.
Will stay the same, yeah, stay the same.
With the same fencing.
Yep, okay, great.
So, and then I recommend, once you get those things, um, obviously, email them to us.
Sure.
And Nick, I know Nick did the review on this with me, Nick, don't, don't spend your client's money printing all these copies.
Okay.
Email it, we take a look at it, and I'm, I'm, I'm into reducing the amount of copies that get sent to me.
That's right.
Um, and I, and I want the, want the minimum amount, so we, we will review the second stuff online with you, uh, via that. And then if it's good, then print the copies for, um, the board, and, and that's pretty easy. Um, we need to, you'll need to continue it to a date certain, um, so, you need to know, you know, uh, that, we have to have our review time and whatnot. Um, if, I, I kinda need to know, um, uh, you know, I, I'm thinking, but it, if it's gonna take you probably a, a week or two to get the stuff, and then it's gonna take me, it's gonna take us a, at least a week, so, the, I'm, I'm, I feel that the April twenty-seventh meeting, um, is the one month.
The April, April?
March?
I'm sorry, March, March, please, March, I'm.
Okay, Bill.
He's excited for spring.
Are you really?
Um, I, I think the one month.
So.
Um, I know David would love to move quicker, but I think that would give us a lot of.
There's no way that you can revise it and us to review it for the March thirteenth meeting, it is.
We, we, we'd be happy with that, I appreciate it.
That's March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-seventh?
March twenty-seventh, and because that way, it gives you time to get it to us, if we need to make any final tweaks and whatnot, it gives us a little bit of time, so, we can do it right, and then come to the board with final plans, and here's a recommended condition.
So our, our goal would be to try to get something to you, so I have the March thirteen timeframe, to give you a couple.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I can't make a motion.
No.
Oh, yeah, to, you're, you're gonna request a.
Well, basically, she's requesting, you're requesting a thing, you want it to be March twenty-seventh.
March twenty-seventh, yes.
Okay, also, do I have a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept, so, March twenty-seventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Um, meeting minutes?
Right.
No.
No, next time.
Okay, so, thank you, David.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other business from anybody?
Well, we got somebody on there, nope, who, where'd it go? Oh, I don't know, he was for the other project, yeah, and they're doing double duty.
Oh, let me ask you, oh, let me ask you one question, before you removed it, when are you going before?
Both projects are up in front of ConCom.
ConCom is in front of Con, uh, ConCom right now.
So understand, if, if you're not through ConCom, we can't approve them, we, we can't approve.
I'm, my fingers are crossed that we were.
Yeah, they're likely gonna get approvals, yeah, we've reviewed it and recommended approval, so, it should be.
Okay, all right. Okay. Just wanted to touch base with you on that.
So, and I don't see anything that we discussed tonight that would impact conservation, obviously, we'll give them an updated plan, there's any changes that we did here, but, um.
But we always require a ConCom to approve before we do, just as, just as a matter of course.
We were hoping to meet with them on the tw- twentieth, but I think.
Their meeting got continued, because I was, obviously, I left for ten minutes to go up and make a presentation to them on, um, something else.
Yeah. I know, Nick was in a panic when they did that, he's like, we have conservation and planning, how are we gonna do that, and I'm like, I'm gonna help you.
All right, very good, thank you, um, any other business?
Uh, no, just to be aware, I believe the meeting on the thirteenth is at the library.
Okay.
So, um, and for you, ma'am, you need to, I think the meeting will not be in town, I believe it's at the library, I'll, I'll get with, I just need to get with Nick, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Nick, Nick Courtney?
Courtney.
That's who I've been dealing with, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Working together. My helper today.
Very good help.
That's it.
We're starting to get busy, we're gonna have homeless projects the next couple of meetings.
Thank you, um, you have a motion to close the meeting.
So me, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.